All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 5:30. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. If you would please, I stand for a moment of prayer. Sheriff Craig, will you please take the honors in the prayer weeks?
Yes, sir. Just pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just, uh, Lord, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight, Lord, and, uh, Lord, take care of this business, God. And Father, I pray for this board, as they come together to take care of the county's business, Lord. Father, we pray for each man and woman gathered here tonight, Lord, and their families, as they represent, Lord. Father, we pray for this community, Lord, and those leaders, Lord, that are gathered here, Father. And, Lord, we just, uh, Lord, we just give you thanks tonight, Lord, for all that you do for us, Lord. Father, we're just so thankful, Lord, that we live in a, Lord, in a country, Lord, that we can, uh, Lord, that we can come together, Lord, and, uh, Lord, that we can just take care of our business, Lord, and we can, uh, be thankful, Lord, for those things that we have here, Lord. Father, we thank you for those men and women, Lord, that are serving in our country, Lord. And Father, for, uh, for those men and women, Lord, that, uh, have given their lives for us, Lord. Lord, we ask you to forgive us for the sins in our life, Lord, and, uh, Lord, just to help us, Lord, uh, to be better men and women and better leaders, Lord. Father, uh, again, we just pray, Lord, for this county and, uh, for those here tonight, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I'm all standing, please, if you'd pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. All right. We have got, Mr. Klein, we have got one amendment to the agenda. Uh, it's in regard to, we have had a request for a de-annexation from the land, from, uh, from Talking Rock back into Pickens County. Now, in order for that to happen, the town of Talking Rock would have to de-annex, and then Pickens County then agrees to take it. So, that being said, um, do we need, do we need a move in a second for the commissioners to give me the authority to sign a DX, a de-annexation request pending on what Talking Rock wants to do?
Basically, if y'all, you put on the agenda.
Yeah. Let me, let me get, if y'all will, I'm going to make a move to, uh, to get this request from a Mr. Zach, being on the agenda, and it would be under item H. Yeah, under item H for, for proposed de-annexation. So, I'm going to put that on the agenda. Uh, I need a move in a second to, uh, to make that amendment, please.
So, there.
Okay. All right. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, but saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. That amendment will be discussed here. It is item H down towards the bottom. All right. Have we have other, uh, any more amendments to the agenda? Don't believe we have. I'm going to make them, uh, need a move in a second to approve the, the agenda.
Move in a second.
Move in a second for the approval of the agenda and for the discussion. None being all in favor, but saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Okay. That brings us down to employee recognition, and I'm going to turn this part of the program over to Ms. Becky Diddy that's been, uh, been running this.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's my honor, but I don't think our honorees are here tonight.
Neither one of them are here?
Mm-mm. I don't think so. Uh, Stephen Anderson, Sheila, uh...
No, neither one. All right. Put them off. We have anything under, under consent agenda? Don't believe we have anything under the consent agenda. All right. All right. Do we have any, we do not have, or do y'all know of any old business that we need to take care of? Nothing listed here. Care to know of any old business? All right. That brings us down to, uh, new business under item nine, the audit presentation for 2017, and I'm going to turn this particular item over to Ms., uh, Ms. Fay Harvey, CFO.
I hope that's her. I mean, I hope that's her. But this is the, uh, the usual presentation of 2000, uh, of the annual audit. This is the 2017 audit.
Evidently, that's not her, is it, Donna? Is that not her, is it?
Yeah.
Might be in Jasper County.
She's been here before.
Well, I tell you, can we?
Can we move that?
Can we just hold that one and go to item number 10 of the financial report? Let you go ahead and do the financial report?
Okay.
All right. Ms. Harvey, I'm going to stay within your, your ballpark. Go ahead and have a financial report, please, and we'll go back to item number nine.
Okay. Um, this financial report that you, um, have to report is for the, um, the period ending May 31st, and that's five months of our fiscal year. So, the expenditure budget should be less than forty-one point seven percent. For, on the revenue side, the, um, the total revenue through May 31st is five million, three hundred nineteen thousand and one dollar. That's twenty point four two percent of the budgeted amount. Under the expenditures for, um, general government, the expenditures were one million, three hundred twenty-six thousand eighty-six dollars, and that is thirty-four point twenty-two percent. For judicial, total judicial expenditures are one million, two hundred nine thousand two seventy-one, and that's thirty-five point one six percent. Public safety is at five million, three hundred seventy-one thousand eighty-nine dollars, and that's forty point three seven percent. And then we go to, um, the public works departments. Their expenditures are one million, two hundred eleven thousand five hundred eight dollars, and that's forty point five three percent. For the, um, the health department, senior center and the MATS program, expenditures were two hundred nine thousand ninety-one dollars, and that's twenty-five point eight six percent. For, um, culture and recreation, three hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars, and that's thirty-eight point four one percent. For, um, housing and development, two hundred fifty-four thousand six seventy, and that's thirty-eight point six five percent. So, overall, uh, the total general fund expenditures through the year in May is nine million, nine hundred fifty-four thousand nine twenty-four, and that's thirty-eight point two two percent. So, it is, um, three, three point oh five percent under the recommended budget level. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures are five hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, and that's twenty-five point zero four percent. For the airport, one hundred fifty-five thousand and eight dollars, and that's thirty-five point one nine percent. The line out of most reports were sent out to all the department, uh, department heads and elected officials on June the 11th, and I have copies of all those if you ever want to go over those.
Y'all have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Fay. We're going to go ahead. Since the auditor hasn't showed up yet, I'm just going to proceed on down to item number 11, uh, under action items, uh, for the approval of the minutes. We need to go ahead and approve the minutes from May 17th, 2018. You've all had a, had a copy that had been sent to you on that particular board meeting. Is there any, uh, admissions or changes we need to make to those particular board minutes? If not, I need a move in a second to approve. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Those minutes have been approved. All right. Then that brings us down to item number two of section A, a work session meeting on June 7th, 2018. You've all had a copy of that. Any admissions or deletions we need to do with that? Any changes before we approve? If not, I need a move in a second to approve. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Those minutes are now approved. Okay. That brings us down to item number B under rezon request. Uh, we've had a, uh, I sure got the right one here. Uh, we have a, from Mr. Dusty Eaton in Pleasant Hill, uh, Pleasant Hill Talking, Pleasant Hill Road in Talking Rock, Georgia. He wants to go from agriculture to suburban residential, four point one seven acres, uh, zero three two dash zero zero five split. All right. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report recommending approval and listening to testimony from the applicant without any public opposition, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to recommend approval of the rezon request on the four point one seven acre parcel to be divided out of a one hundred and twenty-one point twenty-nine acre tract contained on tax parcel number zero three two dash zero zero five. Pickens County Planning Commission now forward this request to the board of commissioners for review and decision. Uh, need a move in a second to approve. Going from agriculture to suburban residential. Have a move, not get a second?
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right. Then we have a second. Another, uh, rezoning request. Uh, Mr. Ronnie Ray on Highway 515 north of Jasper. Uh, it's on 515 corridor. It is not agriculture. He wants to take it to highway business, eight point five acres. All right. The, um, what we've got here is, uh, after reviewing the application, receiving the staff report recommending approval and listening to testimony from the applicant without any public opposition, the Pickens County Board, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to recommend approval of the rezon request on the eight point five acre parcel contained on tax MAC parcel number zero five three D dash zero seven nine dash zero zero seven. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forward this request to the board of commissioners for review. This particular parcel is, is south of, um, the church. They used to be Golf Truck and Tractor, shallow, south of shallow. It's part of, I believe, part of the old Ed Stevens farm that borders 515 corridor, that actually borders 515 corridor.
Is it on the same side as the old tractor?
That's correct. It is on the same side.
It's not the one?
Just south of it.
Just south of it, between there and, and 108. So, Ronnie, uh, Mr. Ray has asked for rezoning for where he, he wants to move his business from where it is now down there and build a whole new complex. So, he needs approval for that. All right. We have a move, move to approve. Not get a second?
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, let, all in favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item number C under, uh, ambulance remount bids. Um, Mr. Elrod is not, uh, not with us tonight, but, uh, he has got three bids here. Um, James Olson Company is tailor-made. Um, forty-five hundred four by four gas is ninety-four six fifty, and F four fifty four by four diesel is one oh one two eighty-five, and F, uh, four, uh, forty-five hundred four by four Dodge diesel, one oh three six fifty. These are remount bids, so these are just cabin chassis, uh, and putting, uh, taking the box off of, uh, one of some of our older ones and just putting it back on, on these right here. Um, the top one is the one that has, uh, uh, he has, he would like for us to consider, uh, the James Olson. You have the Jimmy Gill bid, uh, from Custom Works. Uh, you see the numbers there, forty-five hundred four by four Dodge diesel, one oh nine seven sixty-eight, and an F four fifty four by four diesel Ford for one ten four sixty-one. And down the bottom, you got Keith Bryan with Southeastern Specialty Vehicles, SSV. Uh, he was just going to do one F, uh, four fifty four by four diesel for eleven hundred, uh, I'm sorry, uh, one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Uh, I think the one's on top is the one that Chief Elrod would like us to go with. Yeah, I'm assuming they do. Mm-hmm. So, I need a move in a second. They need Mr. Olson to come in cheaper on the bids on that. So, I guess I need to go ahead with a move in a second to approve, uh, Chief Elrod's, uh, bid, uh, pet bid package here on these, on those particular units.
Move in a second.
Have a move in a second. Uh, any further, uh, discussion? None being, all that favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right. That brings us down. The, the generator at the health department, uh, has went out, given some issues. Um, the, the, North Georgia Health District put it out for bids. Uh, they had received two bids, uh, one from PSU and another from Gin Spring Power. Um, PSU was thirteen, or PSU was thirteen thousand eight thirty-four, and Gin Spring Power was twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-eight. Uh, we had discussions, we had a board meeting last week, and, uh, we had discussed it with them and the city and, uh, the individuals that were sitting there. And I had told them that even though it isn't a Pickens County building, if the health department would, uh, would pitch in half, um, when, I might, we might consider pitching in half, which would be six thousand forty, six, six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars, they're going to pay half to get a new generator. The generator there is probably about, about eighteen years old. So, that being said, um, Gin Spring Power is the cheapest of the two, and they're the ones that put it out for bid. We didn't. So, I'm just giving you all, all a heads up on that. So, they're wanting us to approve the Gin Spring Power bid, which is the cheapest of the two, and they're willing to pay half, and we're willing to pay half. So, I need a move in a second to approve that, please. Have a move in a second to approve the generator for the, uh, health department. Any further discussion? None being, all that favor, but no one saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right. That brings us down to the Village of Blackwell Creek. All right. The Village of Blackwell Creek was a, um, I'll give you a quick review on that one. It was a subdivision that had fell into bankruptcy. Uh, it had sold through a bank sale back a few years ago. Two individuals bought it, uh, Mr. Wayne Bruce and Mr. Curtis Burkett. It does border Big Canoe. Um, Pickens, uh, did have water lines already on it. Uh, the water lines were put in by a private entity, and, uh, we are furnishing water to that, to that entity. There's, there's about three homes in there. They have come to the county and wants, wanted to know if the county would relinquish the hold on that, which we really don't have any money in the project, and, uh, and let them have it, Mr. Curtis Burkett and Wayne Bruce, let them have it back. And then they, in turn, want to work with Big Canoe or the utilities zinc that is now supplying the water in the sewer. Uh, for Big Canoe, they would like to work with them because their issue is, is they would like to try to negotiate sewer capability for their project and, and let the, uh, let utility zinc furnish the water, and then a master meter would be installed at the bottom on Steve Tate Road, and then that would still locate Pickens County with utility zinc for Big Canoe, and still bound sew water from that area right there for the future. Uh, we've had, uh, so, my water department guys aren't here, but they, they have no problem. And personally, on the upper section on phase two of that, somebody has got to put in a pumping station and a, and another water tank up there to make this completed unit, uh, to make it work. Um, uh, we've got letters here in regard to that, and, uh, just want to be sure that y'all don't have an issue of giving this particular area back to the owners of that area, and then they can negotiate with, uh, with, uh, utility zinc for water and sewer connection.
I think it makes sense to let them do that.
It does, it does make sense. And, uh, only thing we're getting out of the deal is what little, uh, why do we sell to the three homes? But we're responsible for all those lines that we have no idea how they've been put in there over the years. So, need a move in a second to approve this. Right, go ahead and sign up on this, these two individuals?
So, move.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, uh, say, uh, all in favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. Huh? Yeah. It's in here. Your letter's in here. We haven't seen one back from him from his attorney. All right. That brings us down to, uh, Scott, Village of Blackwell. Brings us down to Ludwell Community Center. We've had a request from the, uh, nursing home. I don't know what the county would like to do with the community center there right in front of the nursing home. Right now, it is the community center for Ludwell, hasn't been used, um, in numerous years. It is a voting precinct once every two years. Um, we've had, we've got an appraisal done on the property. Um, it is a non-conforming use, which means it's a, a two-story building with a second tank and all, but it's on less than, thinks on less than four tenths of an acre. So, the nursing home is wanting, you want to figure out what we can do with this?
There's some title issues to, to look at. And, uh, I think what our plan was, was that we want to sit down with the Lud, with the, with the nursing home people and can see, I want them to be aware of what the title problems are before they, before they buy. You don't have the ability to, to enter into a private cell with them.
How much is this place?
Do you know? Not, not long term, but it's not anything they would want. I, I, I think first, the next step would be for us to have a discussion with them to figure out, to determine what their plans are, because they will never be, it would be difficult for them to obtain financing unless prompted by all of the stuffs at the time.
How much that land was worth there? That land, uh, good and old is, is the old school property.
It's left.
That one time.
Yeah. Could have been, it, no.
Oh, yeah. It was built right there.
It comes out of, uh, did the mason block, it's like.
It wasn't there when the school was.
The mason block, well, the mason block, I don't know, but, uh, and then the Ludworth community, such, such, uh, with, with the mason block. About such a lot of things.
It was an old recent school was right there for Rick's there.
But I, it was all, but it was on more than half acre.
That's wrong. How big did you want that acre there?
I think this is just a portion.
This is, yeah, this, this four, four, less than four tenths of an acre. Well, that being, that being said, the, um, we've had an appraise. They'd have to, whoever, if we put it out for bids or whatever, uh, they would have to at least pay minimum appraised value. But also, I would recommend to the board that if, if we do decide to go ahead and sell this, uh, that every two years, they have to relinquish a certain area of this for a voting precinct, for area, okay, perpetuity.
Generally speaking, when you auction, I mean, you cannot, we don't ever want to sell anything for less than their appraised value. This may be, after we told them, it may be that y'all want to make a determination based upon the status of the title, based upon, it cannot be used because of the size that it is, because of the non-conforming use. Nobody, you can't throw that building down, build, build another house there. Um, it can only be combined with continuous portion. And the fact that if you did sell it, you would impose a covenant on it, uh, to use it every two years for a voting precinct. I think you could sell it subject to, those may be considerations that you use in discounting the price. We personally left talk with the line to the, to them to see the best of our interest.
Is there any other space we could use for the voting, or is that the one that makes more sales?
It's got a joining building next to it. It's got a sheriff's office, I believe. Ronnie stepped out, and it's got a sheriff's office next to it. And what we could do is make that into the voting precinct. What they want to do is, is use that building for offices and, and, and shut their offices down inside the nursing home and have three or four more rooms, because they're getting so many individuals that are needing the bed space, I guess, and, and they meet that criteria. Uh, well, it'd make it sound handy for, since it's a non-conforming lot, it does join up with the property that the nursing home has already. That way, then, if that was to happen in that configuration, it would be a, a conforming lot at that point.
So, I thought the nursing home property was the most, the school property.
It's an old school property. Old school, or the, the field school.
You say new school, you're talking about, I'm thinking.
I was the first, I was the first kid who went to Ludwell School with the nursing home. For the nursing home, yeah. That was about 1042? Yeah. Close. You can't count that one. So, you're calling the old school, the Ludwell. He's calling the old school, the actually, oh, old, 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 old school. Okay. All right. That's when he carried a lark bucket with a biscuit in it. And you told it, you told it the coal in it, bar, the pot roast stove. Okay. All right. The, uh, so, that being said, do I need a move a second for us to go forward to try to find, or just, I'm just giving y'all some information, and we'll go forward and see what we can find out all the details on this, on that one. All right. Uh, we're going back to, Judge, thank you for being here, Dan.
You're welcome.
Uh, we're looking at this, uh, intergovernmental agreement on indigent of feds. Uh, Phil, you want to discuss?
They're, they're basically three resolutions later. We, we've gone over the, the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the big picture as far as the, the agreement itself. There are some minor changes that, that the other attorneys asked that we make, and those have been highlighted in yellow. One of them is, y'all, the three candidates have agreed to pay the current attorneys a salary of sixty thousand. We have said in the, in the resolution that the salary will be a minimum of forty-five thousand, so that if you hire somebody, the three that we have have a lot of experience and are well worth that, and really probably more than I have. But someone without their experience, someone without their, their level of expertise might not be worth that much. And so, we keep y'all going to come back and sign a new one every time we hire somebody. We just said not less than forty-five thousand. So, so your first res, one resolution you have is, is the main intergovernmental agreement. The next, but another resolution you have is to hire these three attorneys and pay them a salary of sixty thousand. The, the resolution you have in your book also says that you will give them a $250 a month as time. And Gilmore County did not approve that in their meeting last week, whenever it was. And I have not talked to Fanning County's attorney about it yet, but what Dave and the, the Gilmore County attorney and I discussed was, we would just let each county pay their, their attorney, the attorney associated with that county, whatever that site is. And I think y'all agree. In talking with Fay, it's, it's easier on her to have a flat fee of $250 rather than the variable expense accounts. And then the other two candidates can deal with theirs as, as they say, Phil. And so, I would, I would, I can read you what that language is going to be, but I'll modify that before it goes into the amendment, that that would be what you would be approving. The other, the third, the other resolution, which is really, probably would be the first one, you don't have the, the, the judge cannot supervise the, these attorneys. She can't be the one that, if they're in hurt forward, she, she does not need to be in a position where she is telling you they're doing a good job. The commissioners don't really have the legal ability to go into a juvenile courtroom and make the observation, and I'm not reassuring you would want to. And so, as you recall, what we did was appoint a committee of three attorneys throughout the circuit, um, to, to make those determinations. And so, you have one resolution that appoints that committee of three attorneys, and then you have a letter from them that will ask you to, that recommends the three current attorneys that are employed to, to, to be employed pursuant to this contract. And you have your intergovernmental agreement with the three candidates, setting the parameters of what their duties are. And then you have the last one setting the actual salary and the fact that you will pay your own salaries to each, to each one. Do y'all have any, any, and I, Judge Weaver was kind enough to take time out of her schedule to sort of answer any questions that you might have with regard to that. And as you know, we, the real reason why we're doing this is the county has the responsibility to provide indigent defense for these, and, and, and juvenile court. And the public defender's office, because of, it's not recent in order, the Supreme Court opinion has basically said the public defender's office is treated the same as any other law firm with regard to conflicts of interest. And so, that's why we had to create this, this. And so, that's why we had to create this, this entity, this, this, this pathway to, to provide the, the defense outside of the, uh, public defender's office.
Judge, you have anything you'd like to say, Judge?
Well, just, this is just for the dependency cases. Those are the cases where the Department of Family and Children's Services removes your children from use in the middle. So, the delinquency cases, which are like criminal cases in juvenile court, the public defender's office actually does handle those. But we have the contract attorneys, and we have one full-time from each county and one part-time from each county. But when Mr. Landham was talking about the conflicts, uh, the law requires us to appoint an attorney to every child to represent them. Then if the parents qualify, they get an attorney. If you have parents who are not together, they get separate attorneys. If you have three children and they all three have different dads and they all qualify, then the number of attorneys can just keep expanding. And, and our attorneys have been working without any sort of written agreement or any consistent, uh, understanding of what their duties are. So, I'll have one from one county telling me, oh, when I was hired, they told me X, Y, and Z. I'll have someone from another county telling me something different. Of course, I don't have any way of knowing what they were told. And as Mr. Landham said, I need to stay out of personnel issues as far as who gets hired or who's doing a good job or not, but I just would like something in writing to specify exactly what they're supposed to do.
And to stand by such across the circuit, because for sure, it is.
So, other than, other than, other than the stipend?
Other than the what?
The stipend, the fifty-dollar stipend, or, or the stipend, or the, or the, uh, two-hundred dollars. The, these, this contract and this other one we've got here is the same as the other two candidates are looking at right now?
Yes, I'll need it, other than the stipend.
Other than, yeah, other than stipend. How to handle, how to handle the attorney's expense accounts?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have to call Lynn and let her talk to Sam about that, but I, I just don't, I don't see that as a big issue. So, what I would ask y'all to do is sign it with Gilmore County's modification, that Gilmore County will pay county expenses, expenses, we will pay, um, expenses, and Fanning County will pay Harald's expenses.
So, that's the only variable we got?
So, that's all the changes to what you got.
All right. So, what they pay here will be left up to Fanning County, okay?
Yeah, and I think, you know, it always would be, is it on actual receipts, or is it on, is it a flat fee? And what you've done for your, for some constitute losses, is just a flat fee?
Fay, I think we have done that.
As, as Glenn, has Ms. Landham still agreed to that, and you talked to her? Has she agreed to just this document?
Really, the, other than the initial, um, expense report that we got that had some items that won't be reoccurring, it, it's running, you know, four to five hundred dollars every two months, and it will, she won't have to provide all that paperwork if, um, we can just make it a recurring check for her, so. But I, I didn't know if you had talked to her about.
I had, I wanted to, to, to see, see where the vote was on my first, but I, I think it's easier, it's easier, the attorney, the, the attorney doesn't need to be in a position of having to go to the judge or go into the board commissioners to ask for money to go interview clients. If your interview wins is the case, if they know upfront what that budget is, then they can do their own thing and discuss it. This is, this might be on it, but Gilmore County might think it's a bit.
All right, you want, you want us to vote on this as two separate entities, or just do it all at one time?
I think you just have one motion to, to approve all three resolutions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment concerning this item?
Not, not to let the end, Brian, I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't, I hadn't been there.
All right. All right. I need a, uh, I need a move in a second to, to approve this, all three of them together.
Second.
And, uh, and further discussion would be, is that, the approval would be giving me the authority to sign off on three entities.
Once, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's also contingent on Gilmore planning to approve it. Gilmore did it last week, and then so many of those, then we would circulate three originals among the three counties, so they could each have one of their own.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? All right, we have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? Thank you very much.
Take care of it.
Thank you, Judge. All right, that brings us down to, I know we've got the audit, we got one more item to take care of, we kind of put you on the back burner, not to, not to penalize you. We had moved, uh, we have a request from a gentleman by the name of Zach Bennett that has sent a letter and has asked Pickens County if, and it's if, if Talking Rock agrees to de-annex this, his parcel of property with Pickens County accept it. And, uh, that's kind of cuts it to the chase. Would y'all help? We can't, I mean, if, if Talking Rock doesn't, doesn't de-annex, it's kind of a mute issue. But if they do, y'all have a problem accepting it back into the county? All right. I need a move in a second to, to accept his, uh, proposed annexation of, of Talking Rock for just that particular reason.
And then the motion, motion would also be to allow Rock to sign the resolution if, if Talking Rock approves of it, create a resolution with that legal description in it, which moves on a fight chapter. And then that'll be what we'll be in there with.
All right.
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you. Now, that brings us back to item number nine, audit presentation for 2017.
I'll say you. I apologize for being late, but unfortunately, there was a terrible accident on fifty-three, one of those that just, when you see it, your heart just drops, so I just pray that...
You can give me an audit report with more than three pages.
This is the presentation. We are still processing, we have finalized all the numbers and we are processing the report itself.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else need the? All right. So, um, am I gonna run this thing, or?
Sure.
Up and down, up here?
Can y'all, can y'all see that all right with the camera? Okay.
All right, so here we are. It seems just like yesterday when I was here, and I'd be presenting last year's audit. Um, all I, all I, the big thing I can say, when I review this audit, I just feel like every year, it keeps getting better and better. We issued an unmodified report, or a what's referred to as a clean opinion. Uh, this is the highest level of opinion that can be rendered. It's what we would have expected, uh, to, to issue on Pickens County. And to my knowledge, I'm not aware of y'all ever in the past receiving a qualified or an adverse opinion. Basically, what it means is the financial statements are presented fairly with generally accepted accounting principles. That is not the only report we issue. Because you are a government entity, we also issue, um, a report regarding, uh, compliance and internal controls. We, uh, we determine especially, uh, large areas in your organization of what areas need to be tested, and we do document and update internal controls every year, and we do test those. And we do, uh, make recommendations in, uh, areas that, where we see there may need to be some improvement. Also, this year, we also do, we spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards. It's a whole level, another level of testing of controls in project expenditures, et cetera, et cetera, that has to be done. So, that'll be an additional report that will be in your financial statements as well, okay? So, basically, we always add, you know, wanna just talk about what is included in the financial statement audit. Many times, I think the public gets confused on, when you say audit, what do you really mean by audit? This is a financial statement audit, it's not a fraud audit, or, um, it's not an operational audit, et cetera, et cetera. And the financial statement audit includes all departments, funds, and elected officials. We also, um, audit the Development Authority as of December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, and we rely on, uh, the, uh, the opinion of another independent auditor for the Health Department as of June thirty, two thousand seventeen. So, every time I go to present one of these audits, I always think about, if I were in your shoes, what would I want to know? What would be the most important? And usually, what we do focus on is, for these presentations, is the general fund, because it's usually the largest fund and truly the backbone of the government. Uh, for, uh, for Pickens County this year, your general fund, your revenues exceeded expenditures by six, six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
Hey!
Now, we can't complain about that, Candyland. That is fantastic. That just pleases me to continually see that improvement there. Uh, revenues increased four percent, uh, from prior year. Again, you know, can't complain there. Taxes, uh, increased about, uh, compared to, uh, prior year, about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh, two hundred and twelve thousand of that was from property taxes, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand from sales tax. We know our economy is really, um, is, is still really going strong. Other taxes, uh, increased about a hundred and forty-five thousand, and that's, uh, I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, but that's due to a bank that was added in that fiscal year. And insurance premium, uh, tax increased, uh, right at a hundred thousand. Capital lease proceeds decreased two hundred and seventy-one thousand, but, you know, that's really an in and an out. You got the revenue over here and the matching expense on the other side. Intergovernmental, uh, grants, uh, increased six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and that's primarily due to road work, those road set grants. Overall, uh, revenues were under final budget by one million, and there's a couple of reasons why. Capital leases, you know, uh, they were budgeted, but the county didn't see the need to utilize them. Taxes were under budget, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, but as I said earlier, it's still, the taxes you collected, um, did exceed the previous year. And I think one thing, I, it's not just here, I've seen it in other counties, you may wanna look at your budget with budgeted penalties. To me, sometimes that is the number that can get out of whack sometimes. Uh, charges for services were under budget, four hundred and three thousand, and that's due to the, uh, annual write-off adjustment, um, that was done related to EMS. And so, that's, you know, kind of a newer thing, and what you may wanna do going forward is start, um, adjusting, because we don't really do that till the end of the year, but go ahead and include that in your, in your revenue budget. It's an actual expense, but it, it gets included in the revenue budget, okay? Any questions about revenues? Moving on to expenditures, expenditures decreased compared to two thousand sixteen. Expenditures decreased sixty-three thousand dollars, can't beat that, can you? Um, revenues increased, expenditures decreased, that's nice. I wish my own budget worked that way, but it always seems to go the opposite direction. Overall, expenditures were below final budget of one point seven million. There's a couple of reasons why, again, uh, transfers, uh, were under, uh, were, came in under budget, two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Public safety under budget, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, primarily due to salaries and equipment. Public works under budget, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, mainly due to fewer capital leases and repairs, um, maintenance that were not expected. Some of those, you know, are tied to, of course, capital leases, so if you're missing the revenue, you're gonna miss the expense. Same thing goes with some of these grants, too. You don't need it, you don't spend it, so, okay? Um, I always like to look at the trend, um, from two thousand thirteen, the blue line is revenue, the expenditures is the red line, this is the general fund steal. Uh, we continue to, to see that upward climb there. You're almost, you're right at a little over twenty-four million, um, you're getting real close to hitting twenty-five billion. I haven't seen the budget for this fiscal year yet, which I, I would imagine you're getting fairly close. So, it's always important, though, that the blue line stays ahead of the red line, okay? Here's my favorite graph. I am very, very, um, always very passionate, very concerned about reserves in local governments, especially when, you know, um, we go into a bad recession like we had a, a few years ago, many of the governments that had reserves may not have very much coming out of it, but at least they were able to hold on. Lots of governments that were not able, I mean, they held on by having done, fortunately, cut a lot of services, um, lay off people, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think this is important, and as you see, um, your, your reserves right now are right at forty percent. I think that is a great place for you to be at, because I have hopes with, right now, the way you're doing your property taxes, you're set up now, when you collect your pop property taxes in the light, in the, at the end of the year, that's really revenue for that fiscal year. So, where you wanna be is when you collect your revenue at the end of the year, that you're moving into the next year, already fully funded with your, almost the majority of your property tax budget. So, that's, you know, I know when we first started this audit a few years ago, we talked about that as a goal, and I believe we're getting closer to looking at that and maybe making that accounting change on next year's audit. And we can look at it and make a suggestion and see what the impact is, but I really think that you're getting to the point where we can make that adjustment, we, we just adjust the, the revenues, and we can see what the impact is, but I believe your reserves are getting to a point where you can really say that, yes, we are collecting our property taxes, and we pretty much have most of them collected before we go into our next operating period. That's the beauty of being a twelve thirty-one government. You don't want to, the June thirties, you don't have to wait six months, and you're twelve thirty-one, you don't wanna have to wait till almost the end of the year to collect your main source. So, you're getting ahead of, you know, you're getting caught back up in where you need to be, and I know it's been a, a hard, uh, hard road, but you've certainly tightened up your belts and you're making it happen. Any questions?
The, uh, the fact that I think, uh, Ms. Harley has told us that the rec center's gonna be paid off in January of this coming year. Other than that, the only, only debt, I guess, you could say that we've got, of course, enterprise fund with the water department and the, uh, and the airport. Is there any other thing you're seeing out there that you got the issue with?
No, you've got very little, and I won't say it on the next couple of slides, you've got very little debt, um, basically, for a, a government your size. I didn't put this in the slides, but I always like to look at it, but on average, governments your size many times have eight, about around eight billion dollars of general fund debt. This is not county water sewer debt, so, um, no, you're, you know, you're getting, you know, that, that's, that debt's gonna mature next year, and so, you're, you don't really have that much in capital leases either, so, um, we'll hold our breath. Okay, all right, we'll go with it. We also, just moving on out of general fund, is there any more questions about just the general fund? We're gonna go through, uh, too, we'll say a slide about the long-term debt, read what you have, but just quick comments on SLOs. I collected four point two nugget in revenues and spent about three point five million during fiscal year two thousand seventeen, and this went to pay for various county projects. SLOs is a, uh, capital projects budget, so you're not looking at whether or not you've got a profit in that fund or not. Basically, you may collect heavily for the first few years and then not, and then start spending it later on, depending on how the projects start. So, okay? All right. Yes, here, here we go, uh, with long-term debt. I think I was getting capital leases, uh, flipped over with your water sewer fund, but you've got right now one point four million dollars as of June thirty. You've got about, uh, four hundred and eighteen thousand left on that community center, which will mature next year, and then you've got a million dollars on capital leases. You know, a lot of times, um, I like to talk to governments about, instead of leasing, let's, you know, create a capital projects fund and start funding it, so that you have money set away. But I know a lot of these, uh, lease programs that are out there are very, are very good programs and are a little bit different from what's probably been seen, uh, in the past, but, uh, you know, you, as compared to other counties your size, um, on average, according to the Department of Community Affairs, many of them are averaging around eight million dollars, uh, in debt, where you're, uh, right at just, uh, very low, on the low end. Okay? Any questions about that? All right. Water, water fund, operating income, a hundred and... All right, water fund, operating income, $172,000. $172,000 covers $627,000 in depreciation cost, which is your non-depreciable. It's a non-cash transaction, basically. It's just acknowledging how much wear and tear in your equipment. And, you know, in the perfect world, you would set that amount aside each year, and by the time it wears out, you've got enough money to replace it or repair it, et cetera, et cetera. That $172 does not include debt service payments in the amount of $694,000. Now, really, what that means is you're probably putting $100,000 in the bank after you paid your debt and everything. But one goal you may want to have going forward in this, it's an enterprise fund, especially when you're looking at your cost and you're looking at your rates, is have the goal to, if you just use your depreciation to pay debt service, then you really have not earned, you've really not built up any reserves. It's hard to build up reserves like that. So one thing I like to do is to see that operating income gets high enough that it can cover a good portion of the depreciation cost and debt service as well. So that's not a goal that happens over, in one year. It takes time to make that happen, but then that way, you start building up reserves and you're not so tied down when something happens, because many times those repairs can be very, very expensive, and you're having to look at trying to borrow money quickly or going after, you know, federal grants, et cetera. It just gives you more flexibility there and also allows you to replace other smaller pieces of equipment without having to re-lease or finance it. Moving on, long-term debt, $6.8 million. Pretty much all of that is in bonds payable, and that's the water line. Infrastructure, so it's where you're acquiring infrastructure and just the construction of that. Very good interest rate, 2.35%, and that matures in 2029. Another point I wanted to make about being able to set the depreciation cost over in a reserve is the fact that that can also be used to help extend and build more lines without having to borrow money for it, okay? Airport authority, now, we all know we've got to have an airport, don't we? Because it's great for economic purposes, and a lot of communities have them, but guess what, it's hard to get them to make money yet. Well, let's just say they make money in other ways, by what they're able to bring into the area. So you're going to have to acknowledge that for the majority, this is, there's very few of them that I'm seeing that are actually profitable enough that they're producing a profit. They usually have general funds or some other funds having to kick in. Your operating loss this year on the airport authority was $132,000, which does include depreciation of around $101,000. So basically, you still probably had a $31,000 cash loss. That includes debt service payments of $291,000. So we know probably who's having to help kick in money there, and I know there's inter-fund transactions between the airport authority and the general fund, and you may want to look at considering how those are going to be handled going forward, of whether or not, you know, if they're ever going to be in a position that they can really pay that back or if they just get acknowledged going forward like transfers, so. Long-term debt, really, you know, it's not too bad as far as how much debt's outstanding. There's outstanding amount of $3.4 million with a variable interest rate of 4%. And it matures 2019 as well, so, but I'm sure it'll be refinanced. Other issues, debt pension liability, I always like to bring this up as a 1231, 2017. It's $7.1 million. It really jumped up there compared to the previous year, probably because of the markets and inflation and other factors going in there. But one thing too, I like to look at that, is how well you're funded compared to your fiduciary assets. And right now, you're around, you're about in the 40% funded. Right now in Georgia, the average is around 70%. Nationwide, 80% is considered good right now across the nation. So that may be a conversation you may want to sit down and talk to your actuary about to see what changes may need to be made, because it did jump up quite a bit from last year.
I think a lot of that was due to the plan change, because we've changed the plan, and it's now closed to employees of January 1st, 2016.
So you went ahead and froze it, so all these employees, and so going forward.
It should be reversing.
So then they will start reversing itself here.
That's right.
So, you know, we probably need to make sure that we put a subsequent event in the financial statements to explain that fact, too. We'll do that before we finalize it, so.
I think I shouldn't have been doing that.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, any questions?
Just want to thank our wonderful financial officer.
Yes, she does a fantastic job. She stays on top of it, very organized. If there's any questions that hesitate, call us. And so that's, you know, she's very, very a true asset for the county.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to try to pass home through Delana to see if I can see some homeboat people.
Well, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, bring us down to item number 12 under guessing comments. Brian, do you have a?
Yeah, first, let me apologize to the commission for interrupting. I didn't mean to do that, so. Indigent defense. Not to dispute anything, the county attorney said I couldn't hear everything, so not to be redundant also. Indigent defense, the Supreme Court of the United States said that for children, we have to provide an attorney. The state of Georgia, my understanding, said the way we will handle that is all judicial districts. They handed it down to judicial districts to provide that attorney, and then you start splitting on the public defender's office, which leaves us with the circuit being Appalachian Judicial Circuit. That being said, is, I have read that document, the intergovernmental agreement, I have read multiple times forward and backward. And although I have the highest respect for this commission, and it's not your place to tell Fannin County or to encourage Fannin County, still, you are acting in an intergovernmental agreement that Fannin County is not upholding, okay? Now, I made these same comments in Gilmer County Commission last week. A panel of three is appointed. Now, my understanding through the panel of three and what I read, is the panel of three is one attorney from each county for the circuit. That would be, are you not one of the panel?
No, I'm not.
You're not for, okay.
Pickens County appointees, Bill Pickett.
Okay.
It's Bill Pickett, K.M. West.
K.M. West, right, but, thank you. Actually, I just wanted you to say that. Sorry. But anyhow, the two counties do not have their county attorney as part of the panel. Fannin County County Attorney Lynn Doss is the panel, the individual on the panel there. My understanding and what I read, the panel was appointed to take it out of what I'd say, your hands, but not your responsibility. So the panel was reported, so you would not maybe ask your attorney, hey, how many cases do you have? How many did you try this month? How's it going? Why didn't you do this or that? Because that would, should be left up to a panel of their peers, and is what the agreement was, my understanding. That panel needs to report back to you. You're still the responsible body of the panel. So I don't know how often they're reporting back. Now, I do know Pickens County, you're doing the best you can to live up to the agreement. Gilmer County is also. But it says across the circuit. I know Gilmer County has, their attorney has come to Pickens County and vice versa. I'm not aware of Harry Doss coming across the circuit at any time. Harry Doss is the indigent defense attorney for Fannin County. Also, the agreement says you have to be an employee. We all know the difference between a subcontractor and employee. You cannot direct a subcontractor. You can't do it. He is a subcontractor. Fannin County has not brought him on as an employee and refuses to. That's number one. Number two, my, I wish the juvenile judge would have stayed around, okay? Because I would ask you to talk to the juvenile judge about, supposedly, Mr. Doss says he doesn't work over 30 hours. He doesn't work in other counties. They have a hard time scheduling for indigent defense for these children court cases because of Fannin County. All right, so while you have this open, all right, while you have this open, you know, I think it's time the three counties come together. That's a conflict in Fannin, of being on the panel. You three are responsible for what the panel brings to you. So one, I think it's a conflict, it needs to be in that agreement, that Harry Doss, either Fannin County brings on an employee, all right? Either they bring on an employee, because it's across the circuit. And the only reason I'm bringing this up in Pickens County is you people are paying the bills for somebody that's supposed to be working across the circuit.
Well, now, I can say, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I can say, I've been up to courthouse early in the morning, and Mr. Doss is up there.
Do you know if it's because of a juvenile indigent care defense?
I can't speak to that.
That's exactly right. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying to get down that road 100%. All I'm saying is at this time, I think that it's a conflict for the county attorney up there, okay, to be on the panel, her husband, for you guys to sign an agreement, okay, intergovernmental agreement, because it's the circuit, for her husband to be the indigent defense, because at the same time, he's the indigent defense attorney for the county. He gets, and I'm going to say this, I think about $4,800 a month, I think, a blank check, not a blank check, but I mean a whole check, as a subcontractor for 48. He's not beholden to anybody, which, when you sign that, is across the circuit. And the other thing is, is he is the probate court public defender at the same time in Fannin County. So I just think while you have this open, we should consider this as indigent defense. Now, I have nothing personal against those people, but I do know for a fact that, I'll just say, conversations that the juvenile judge that just left here has a hard time putting her calendar together, is my understanding, based on Fannin County.
Brian Buckets, I did ask, I was aware of you asking those questions in Gilmer County.
I figured you were, sir.
I did ask Judge Wheeler about that, and she said unequivocally that Harry does come to Pickens County and that he does work four in excess of 40 hours.
He works 40 hours?
She said that he did, and all of those attorneys do. I mean, it is not a 40-hour-a-week job. We have that in the agreement, they're working more than that. She had no issue with regard to the time that he put in, as well as where, I mean, he's never refused to come to Pickens County, that sort of thing. Now, with regard to him working in probate court, that is part of what this agreement was to, that's part of what we're dealing with, is we want to have this regulated across the three counties. And so we're trying, we don't, the three boards of commissioners have agreed that whoever this attorney is that receives this appointment will only work as a juvenile court public defender. They do not have the ability under this agreement to work in probate court. I don't know if they've addressed that with Harry yet or not, but that's one of the things that they will need to address with him, and our commissioners have talked to their commissioners, and they're aware of that. With regard to the panel, and it being a conflict of interest, that is fully within Fannin County's purview to address. We don't have the ability to dictate to them who they put on the panel. They don't have the ability to dictate to us who we put on the panel. I think, I think as a practical matter, those attorneys are not going into juvenile court once a week and judging whether or not these attorneys are doing their job or not. That is a mechanism in place. If we ever needed to remove an attorney, then that is the mechanism they would do, to keep the judge out of the personnel decisions, to keep the commissioners out of the personnel decision, because they're not qualified to go into juvenile court. If Fannin County's Board of Commissioners believes that Lynn Doss cannot perform that ethically or with or without a conflict of interest, that is within their job or their role to make that decision for their citizens. But that's not really on us. I think that, as you see this evolve, you'll, I mean, like you said, they have to address the Harry working in probate court. Our Glen Stone is not allowed to work in probate court. Vicky's not allowed to work in probate court. And that's part of why the three commissions met to discuss this, to have it, have each of these on the same playing ground. They're going to be paid the same, they're going, except for the expense account. They're going to be paid the same as far as the salary goes, because as of right now, they all three have pretty much the same range of expertise and abilities. If we hire somebody right out of law school, but the other two are going to have to train for two years before they can get to this level, they're not going to make $60,000. They're going to make the $45,000. That's kind of what I was talking to them earlier. But I hear what you're saying, and I, but I think those points are better raised in Fannin County, and I think they have to address what's going to happen with the probate court. And I, you know, I don't know what Harry's going to do. I've talked to Lynn about, made her aware of this issue, that this is something that has to be addressed, and of every degree of circuit that they will address it. You also said that about the full-time versus independent contractor. The Board of Commissioners do have the ability to direct. I mean, we do, we are going to meet that definition of employee versus independent contractor. The tools that they're using are being provided by the commission. They're having to give them a laptop, having to give them a cellphone. No, they don't hold a license to practice law from the bar of Georgia, but that's why we have a panel. And through that panel, they are directing their conduct and what they will and will not do. They are directing what they will and will not do through this intergovernmental agreement that says you will not go to probate court. So from that standpoint, they are meeting that, that they are making that distinction between an independent contractor, which are what the conflict attorneys really are. I mean, we did, the conflict attorneys are not addressing here, Judge Wheeler talked about that a little bit in her discussion, that when we have, when we have, you know, a family of 10, and all of them are indigent, and all of them get their own attorneys, these three can't handle it. And so we have to have the contract attorneys come in. They are independent contractors, and we pay them an hourly wage. And we don't have any discretion over that, they're court-appointed, and once the court appoints them, they're on their own. And the panel of three, with Pickett and the rest of them, have no supervisory authority over them.
Not to interrupt you, but you've referred a couple of times to not having, not having authority over that, but then back to the panel's authority.
Not having authority over what?
Over Fannin County and their decision, but then you've referred back to the panel as the group, and that is what my understanding is, the panel. The only thing I'm concerned about is the indigent care of defense of the children, and the fact that your county is meeting that intergovernmental agreement, and your attorney, correct, is an employee of the county of Pickens, Pickens County, correct? Same thing with Gilmer County. Fannin County is not. So there, when you have an overflow of cases, you are contracting the mountain. That's certainly understandable, but your main attorney is supposed to be an employee. Mr. Doss is not.
Let me say this with regard to the definition of employment. If Mr. Doss chooses not to take health insurance and other benefits that are offered to county employees, that's his decision, but they are there for him to be offered. For example, he doesn't have to have a YNO insurance, because he's covered under the county's policy. He may not choose to do that. I don't know why he would, because all it's going to do is make Lynn's premium go sky high with him doing juvenile court. But he would have to be, he's supposed to be an employee. He's supposed to be getting a W-2.
Yes.
And that's, and that's what the agreement requires. We don't, I haven't called up Lynn to know what Fannin County has done, if they have signed this agreement or if they want other modifications to it.
Now, I wanted to be clear with the commissions, I'm not criticizing your commission tonight, in no way whatsoever. I'm just saying you're part of the circuit, and the circuit is required, which puts you into a panel. And I want to make sure, and no disrespect to this commission.
Let me make one other point that may provide a little bit of clarity on this. This, that panel is, they would, if one of these three attorneys is not doing their job, that panel, that panel would be charged with responsibility coming before the Board of Commissioners and say, this person's not doing their job, we recommend you terminate it. Or we... them, or we recommend you hire this person. In that situation, and I know where you're, I know, I know that's exactly what you're worrying about.
I'm concerned about conflict.
I know, and so if Fannin, if it was the, if it was Harry Doss that was being accused of not making, not doing what he's supposed to be doing under this agreement, and therefore should be removed or terminated or whatever else, Lynn, I would assume, and knowing Lynn, I would say that Lynn would recuse herself from any deliberations regarding that committee, any, in any recommendation, and it will be the remaining two members of that committee that would go to the Fannin County Board of Commissioners and have that discussion.
Okay, let me ask you just quickly, and I know I'm not trying to keep you, but you said a minute ago, not to quote you, but when I made my comments at Gilmer County last week, you, you got, you got a call concerning my, some of my comments, and they were discussed, and you then spoke to Judge Wheeler, correct?
That's right, that's right.
But you're not on the panel.
That's right.
Right. But you found out through Judge Wheeler, they're doing okay, but that's not how the report should be coming back to this commission.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait.
Wait, but, but some of my concerns that I brought up, you, you addressed with her. When is the last time this commission has had any kind of panel report, one, from what's going on in that area? Number two, Lynn Doss is the one that writes, your, your attorney is the one, if you have an attorney leave, your attorney writes a recommendation for a new attorney to this commission to hire, correct?
No.
On the panel.
The entire panel.
Well, the panel, they send it to the panel, right? And the panel then sends it to you, and you hire. Who, how could you, how could you say, because you just said that the judge sees Harry Doss down here in Pickens, which then he's across the circuit, and he's here with you, and Lynn Doss be not in conflict with the attorney that's, that's handling it? I have a problem with that. I just, I just do, and I understand I'm in Pickens County, but I made the same, I'm going to make the same comments to them, but it's across the circuit, and I really think before the two counties live by that agreement, which the Supreme Court says you have to as a circuit, I think you need to clean up the one on the north in Aska.
I think you'll find though, Brian, that what I'm, the two points I'm making are, number one, Fannin County can appoint whoever they want to, this panel, there's nothing we can do about it.
I understand.
The second point I'm trying to make is, if there is a, if, if that panel has to address Harry Doss's conduct or employment ability or whatever, and Lynn Doss, his wife, is on that panel, she would recuse herself from whatever recommendation that panel's making to the Fannin County Board of Commissioners.
I, I, I understand, I understand, and I appreciate it. I just, and again, I can't say, I can't say enough about the respect I have for this commission here, and, and I appreciate your explanation.
Appreciate you asking questions.
Any other comments, questions? What a break, what a break. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it is approximately about 17 minutes to 7:00. This is one of our longer meetings, and of course, thank you for the auditor coming in and working with us here on that. I think, Robert, go home and eat supper. While that, Maggie, move a second to adjourn.
Sure.
I'm moving a second before the discussion, none being in favor, please stand up.